...Rotary Conference in Toronto.
Oh.
[laughing]
I'd like to call the order this meeting of the Board of Trustees for the school district for June 25th, 2018. First item, please.
We'll call Hussein Barry here.
Here.
Mary Lane.
Here.
Celia Nasser.
Here.
Mary Petlicoff.
Here.
James Thorpe. James Thorpe is, uh...
On vacation.
I don't know if it's a vacation. It's a working vacation.
He's at a conference.
Conference, yeah.
Okay, that sounds...
President Mead?
Here.
Okay.
Next item, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. President Mead will lead the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item, please.
Next item, Superintendent's Update. Agenda items.
So we'll start with a video that we have commemorating the graduates. We had a wonderful month of June, and we mentioned this is the last board meeting. And so we're going to start with a little video, and then we'll have Ms. Peterson come up for some statistics on our graduates.
You have the talent, the drive, the care and commitment to make an impact on everyone you meet.
I further believe that our purpose in life is to serve humanity and make a mark on our community which distinguishes us from others. That's what Thunderbirds do.
The phoenix symbolizes renewal, resurrection, and new beginnings, much like the word commencement, which does not mean the end, but a new beginning.
Mrs. Wozniak's class in Maples thinks you should listen to your teachers. Very good advice. So please join me in recognizing the staff that has supported you throughout your years.
Yes, you are the future. The world is yours, and there is nothing that you cannot accomplish. Congratulations, class of 2018. The world awaits you.
As Dr. Seuss once said, "Today you are you." That is truer than true. There is no one alive who is you-er than you.
Dear graduate, dare to do great things in life. Unless, of course, your new roommate from the U.P. dares you to go swimming in the pond in front of the dorms in the middle of January.
No, we're not going to have a snow day, not in this weather. Sorry, students. Uh, 80 degrees, come on.
Small acts of kindness can make a big difference. So take a moment to share a random act of kindness and watch the difference it can make. Let me prove it to you. Got the program here. The names. Hassan Al-Mousawi. Hassan Al-Mousawi, come on up to the stage, please.
I have Akmentaha.
Sarah Locke.
Samira Nasser.
Emusa Anani. Come on up here to Dr. Choco and Ms. Ali Bowsey.
I want to thank these students for their hard work, but more importantly, I just want to let them know how much we appreciate them being part of the Dearborn Public Schools. Mr. Mustedan also has a few gift cards that he would like to pass them along. Thank you.
In an interview with Scholastic Magazine, Colin Powell, the first African-American to serve as U.S. Secretary of State, said, "By doing my best every day, day after day, year after year, I finally got to the top. Being important isn't as important as doing your best every day."
Because at the end of the day, you have to live with the life you choose. And if you have any goals, I hope the goal is happiness, because that's all that matters. You are all that matters.
I'll leave you with these words from the infamous Mr. Ritzick. In the adult world, you've got to know how to get stuff done. And I think that this class is capable of getting that stuff done.
Atso Ford, teachers, fellow students, and everyone gathered here to celebrate this wonderful day. I only hope I can return to you a fraction of what you've given to me. Thank you.
We are all the impossibles that became possible. We are all the oppressors that became liberated. We are the tenacity and sacrifice of our parents. We are all the nobodies who became somebody. We are Fortson Tractor.
Your limits are boundless, and as such, let your actions be just as ambitious. Thank you.
The diplomas we receive today are far more than pieces of paper. Our diplomas symbolize a fundamental privilege, the privilege to an education. Thank you.
Although it is hard to escape titles, we are not what we are voted into. We are what we have done. My experiences define me first and foremost, and going about the world, choosing my relationships in this matter, have allowed me to create the strongest bonds where empathy is cherished and blossoms.
All Magna staff has cared for every single one of us as if we are one of their own kids. Always encouraging us, always motivating us, always supporting us, always feeding us, always being considerate, always loving us even when we mess up, most of all, building us to who we are now.
It is a bitter sweet honor to be leaving such an impactful school. I am truly thankful for the enlightening experience. It has been one of my profound journeys, and everyone involved has made it even better. Once again, congratulations to the class of 2018. We did it.
One, two, three. It is our true honor to now declare you formally and officially graduates of Atso Ford High School.
We now pronounce you graduates of Fortson High School. Please move the tassel from right to left.
We now pronounce you graduates of Dearborn High School. Please move your tassels from the right to the left.
Please move your tassels from the right to the left, and congratulations.
So again, congratulations to all our graduates. I know this is the best time of year, and so we wish them all the best. And we just got finished with our Collegiate Academy celebration prior to the board meeting, so I'll turn this over to Ms. Peterson. Thank you to Mr. Shigfried.
I don't know how you follow that, all those wonderful students and speeches. So this year, Dearborn Public Schools had 1,471 graduates. I think there's the slide. Nope, there you go. And our Collegiate Academy, Dr. Maliko said we just had a celebration. We have 57 graduates that finished their diploma, and of the 57, 30 of them also earned their associate degree in that five-year time. So drumroll, please. Our graduates earned $11,328,713 in scholarships this year.
And where are our graduates going? Well, it seems that a lot of them like to stay
close to home, because Henry Ford College, Wayne State, and University of Michigan/Dearborn are very popular schools. But so are Michigan State University and University of Michigan Ann Arbor. So we won't choose sides there. Although my students did go to the university, or my children did go to University of Michigan/Dearborn. However, this year, we also have graduates attending a few Ivy schools, Ivy League schools, University of Pennsylvania, Harvard, and Stanford. So congratulations to all of the graduates.
Next item, please.
Question before you move on?
Certainly.
Is that our highest number of graduates?
I am not positive. I have to get back to...
I know. I remember when my daughter graduated, it was maybe 1,100, 1,200. So I'm thinking that we're peaking. I mean, maybe in the future we'll have more, but...
I would think so for two reasons. Our population increased, and we're at the highest percentage of all time, so it does make sense. But we can find that out over historically for you.
Good. Thank you.
So I still have one more item on the agenda. Just retirements. Always want to congratulate our retirees. We have Giacinta Feola with 44 years of service, Diana Jaeger, 25 years, Donald McCasney, 32 years, Tony McGarrett, 30 years, Sue Nolan, 22 years, Linda O'Connell, over 17 years of service, Amira Salami, 21 years of service, and Tracy Chesleck-Tura, over 13 years of service. We congratulate and thank them for their dedication to our students. Let's give them a please. And as always, I will be sending cards to them.
Was that non-agenda item? So we're done with that?
No.
Is there a study in that?
Next item is non-agenda items.
So just a quick update, the Infrastructure Committee, that's going to move forward. We have not sent out the letters yet, but they will be going out shortly, and we'll give potential individuals the ability to decide if they want to serve on the committee. And just for the public, the Infrastructure Committee, we've been talking about this over the course of the year with the school capacity and boundaries, and what it is, it's going to be recommendations that we're going to want to take to the board on long-term infrastructure within the district, current needs, expansion, other things that we've been discussing at every board meeting.
Trustee Elaine.
So I had planned on bringing this up later, but since you mentioned the Infrastructure Committee, I'm assuming, Dr. Maliko, that they're being given historic documents, because we've had a number of committees not too long ago. I think we had one that, I don't know what that was, maybe two or three years ago, on infrastructure needs. And then we've got lots of historic documents. I know we were given CDs at one point for capacity numbers for the building. So I assume, and I know everybody doesn't want to do that much reading, but I assume we'll make that available in a folder, all of that historic information. Then one other thing did occur to me also. I know when I'm looking in a building, I'm not skilled trades, obviously. I mean, I'm a gardener, maybe, but I can see the outside of a building, I can see the inside, but I don't even know what I should expect as far as cleanliness, as far as maintenance, things like that. So I was wondering whether we might, and I don't know how to put this out for everybody to think about, we have people who are experts in this, our union, our skilled trades union, our building maintenance people, Mr. Grzynski, Dr. Ball. Can we have some kind of training for them for what to look at when they go into a building? Do they know, I mean, they can be shown the auditorium, they can be shown the rooms. Do they know how to evaluate, are we at capacity, are we maintaining these buildings? What are the telltale signs that we need to add more in maintenance or in care of our buildings? Are we over capacity? So those are just some thoughts that I had.
You were talking about training of the committee members.
Training of the committee. I know the committee is going to visit a couple of our buildings, but without some background information, they go into a building, and we all go into buildings, but we don't know, I don't know, how do I look at, I look at overall appearance. Beyond that, I look for little details that tell me this is clean, there's not garbage on the floor, has the floor been stripped, you know, is the exterior picked up? So things like that, yeah.
Trustee Petlicoff.
Well, I was on the last major infrastructure committee. I was on the bond task force back in the early 2000s before we proposed the majority of the bonds that helped shape the new buildings. What we did at that time with that, and Metro Bureau was also the facilitator at that time, was we broke up into groups, and we were each assigned a number of buildings, three to four buildings. And when we went into the buildings and took a tour, we had the school principal, we had the school engineer, we had all the people who, the custodians, involved with the touring of the building in order to point out those things. And we also did our due diligence. Of course, I got lucky, I had an architect on my team, so he knew a lot of things to look for. When we, we went to the bowels of the buildings, went and looked at the heating and cooling systems, whatever, those kinds of things as well. But the schools themselves had the people available to help highlight, and we were given some guidance by Metro Bureau as to not, every school has something that they want to try to sell for what they, what their concerns are.
Their needs.
Their needs. But you had to look at the bigger picture of the needs of the whole school community. So we were also given some guidelines as to how to interpret what we were looking at. So that's just, just my, it can be done, and it can be done in a manner that people who are not really educated in those areas can understand.
Trustee Hamud.
I know, we talked about this, of course, every school has its priorities. Our schools need a lot of work. They've held us and our students for many, many, many years. But I do hope that one topic that's, that could be at the forefront of this as they're going through the buildings, and we talked about security. And I know that hopefully we can have Dearborn PD help us with this. We know that they have equipment that they're currently using to see if we are going to get any equipment in our schools to make sure that they are...
It coordinates, yeah.
It coordinates with their equipment. So just wanted to remind us all of that. And I know we can't get everything we want, but it would be nice for the committee to put together a list, and maybe if we can talk to the police department and see what's important, what their advice is.
We plan to have the police representative on the committee as well, so we're going to talk to Chief Adad. But the safety issue will be one of the first things that will be on the agenda. And then we can add all the other things, but that's a very good point, you know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Well, I just want to say, knowing that we have a finite amount of resource to use, and we have a lot of needs and a lot of wants, that's always the hardest thing to manage, especially in a group that might have competing interests. So I'll tell you that I hope that the missive from the individuals who are on the committee is we want to get the biggest bang for our buck. We want to make sure we have a comprehensive understanding of our needs, but we also have to understand that we only have limited dollars to spend, and what is, what is the most practical way to advance those needs, that that's going to be sustainable, that's going to do, have the biggest impact. And so I think we need to be pretty clear on what, and as a board, it's going to be our decision in the end as to how we dedicate those priorities. But we need to understand that, that the community has to understand that we're going to be limited.
Right.
No matter what. We can't ask for, you know, infinite amount of dollars.
Trustee Barry.
Yes, some comments on a different subject, Dr. Maliko. As I promised at the last meeting, I'm going to honor my, our good friend, Brian Winston, by keeping remedial classes and college readiness out on the front burner. In 2010, we started asking questions about graduation rates and dropout rates, and Brian Winston jumped all over it, and the support of the board was just unbelievable. We said we need to do whatever we need to do. We're not going to blame, we're not going to make anybody feel guilty, but we need to get to it. And 2018, and obviously, congratulations to all the graduates. Like Trustee Elaine mentioned, I do believe this is the largest amount of graduates we had, number-wise. But going back to college readiness and remedial classes, again, no blame. We're not going to say it's at this level, at that level, or any particular school. I think, and you don't have to comment today, Dr. Maliko, but I do welcome comments from my colleagues. All the, I was at an event last week, and somebody mentioned some numbers. They weren't good, about college readiness for all three, college readiness for all three of our high schools. And I was able to get to the article, and I'm not going to cherry pick the article and say, hey, he was right. I want to wait and read the whole article if I can make a comment, and I'll bring it to your attention, Dr. Maliko, what article I'm talking about. Henry Ford College has been giving us some great information. Wherever it is, we just have to get better. We have to do better for our students. When almost 1,500 students are graduating from our Dearborn Public Schools, we need to increase that number, whatever it takes. When we say student first, I think that's, that's what student first means to me. We need to get them ready for the next level. Now, I don't know what the next step is, if it's something we need to talk about at retreat, or whatever we need to do, I'd like for us to get to it, to be honest with you.
I'm a little confused. Does the, how this relates to infrastructure?
No, no, no. I waited for everybody to...
Oh, oh, this is a separate topic.
Our agenda doesn't really give us a chance to. I mean, we're always like confused. Where does this come in the comments? This is under Superintendent's Update. I'm commenting to the superintendent to say, this is something I am going to keep on the front burner.
Okay.
Love for us to move forward. Has nothing to do with infrastructure.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, actually, it does, but that's all that's discussion.
Okay, so I got...
I have a little data. Can I share?
Yeah.
So our largest graduating class was actually in 2012, 13, 1,489. So it beat this year by 15, 17. My school data does college remedial, it tells us the percent. So in 2011, 12, it was 36% of our students took college remedial coursework. And the last year that they have data, because it takes them a while, it was 15, 16, and it was 38%. So we've been pretty stagnant. We haven't really gone up or down, so keep that on our, we'll keep that...
Yeah, no, thank you. Appreciate that. And I looked at that. Also, I'm looking at Bridge, Academic State Champs for 2017, and it does have all three high schools. Like I said, I'm not going to mention these numbers. I just want to make sure we're talking about, you know, apples and apples, comparing apples to apples. So yeah, thank you very much for that information.
Can I ask the super researcher one other question? She's amazing. She must have Google on her side or something. Sorry, I shouldn't mention trade names, should I? How does that number that we're pretty stable at, 36, 38%, how does that compare with other districts? Is that pretty much typical for... I believe that's near the average, but I can look it up on myschooldata.org has all this information. You're quick on the draw. Wow.
Trustee Petlicoff.
Well, since he would like some comments, I'm just, I'm curious as to when we have need remediation, because we're sending students out there with diplomas, and we had this conversation last time, we hope those diplomas have real value, and that it translates into the students being capable of moving on to the next level of either workforce environment or college readiness. And when they need remediation, I, it always makes me wonder, and we've started to have that conversation a little louder now, about whether what we're sending out, what we've prepared them for, is, is well-aligned with what they're looking for out there. And is that where the real problem is, is that our expectations of what we've taught them aren't the same expectations of what they need on the other side? And are we somehow missing that sweet spot of getting those students the right information, the right, the right amount of education in the right arenas? And that's where I'm wondering, are we, are we really challenged? You know, because when you go to college, I know when I went to U of M/Dearborn from a local high school here, I thought, oh my God, I'm, you know, I'm ready. And I went right into some math classes, and I hadn't seen anything in the calc classes at the college level that I had had in the calc classes at my high school level. And I'm like, did I miss, what's happened here? And it was just that they had a different setup of what they, of what they were teaching. So I'm thinking that's still going on to this day.
And honestly, I don't know the answers.
Yeah.
I want to start this dialogue, start this discussion, and like I said, this is something that was very near and dear to Brian Winston's heart, and I want to pick up, you know, where he left off, you know, many, many years ago, when he was told, leave the discussion about remedial classes alone, it will cost us too much money. But our students leaving our high school, I'm not questioning the job that we do. We do some tremendous things. We just heard the millions and millions of dollars, you know, scholarships earned by our students. We got young, you know, students, graduates going to Harvard, Pennsylvania, Purdue, U of M, MSU, all over. We're doing a great job. I guess if we start this discussion, just like we did eight years ago about graduation rates, and we are bragging, and rightly so, about our graduation rates, I would want five, six years from now that we're, we're not at the average. We're like way ahead of the average, because this is what Dearborn did, because this is what Dearborn Public Schools always does. We're ahead of the game. We don't wait for people to tell us what to do.
Right. And we, and we have the perfect environment to continue having those conversations outside of our framework with, with the colleges and with the industry around us, to make sure that we're meeting. And I think we, we have done a lot of that conversation. We just need to continue to strengthen those environments where we, where we have better communication of what the, and quite frankly, I'm beginning to wonder, because I, I've been reading and following along the state's intervention with the social studies program for the, you know, and I actually went onto the website to take a look at what they were proposing. It was like 90-some pages or 86 pages or something of the changes that they were talking about. And it's for K-12, you know, and I'm thinking, what does this really do at the other level at the, because, you know, we're not, we're not insisting that the colleges move their marks or anything. And so are we being asked to do something differently at the K-12 level in all of the subject matters that just isn't meeting up with what's going on out in the other end of that trail with them in the workforce and then, and at the college level? Because we have so many demands from the state and federal government of how our curriculum ought to shape up.
And I think that this is...
Trustee Hamud.
This is an important conversation to be had. I'd like to know, how is that evaluated? And I think that...
And I think that it would start the conversation, how could we improve that? Kind of our school improvements. And maybe it is something as simple as, we need to start preparing our kids for a different process, a different environment. A lot of times, we have, we have such a great environment here at Dearborn Public Schools that really has become home to a lot of us, and we are used to a specific way or style of doing things. I know that sometimes when our children are going to these universities, they're not prepared, not necessarily academically, but maybe in different ways. I'm not sure what the answer is. If I did, maybe we wouldn't have the problem. And I don't think any of us really can pinpoint what the problem is, but this is, this is where the conversation begins, and I'm sure it's been going on for a long time, but it would be nice to see and to talk to people that are coming up with these numbers of, how is this being evaluated? And then try to come up with a collective solution and start working on it collectively.
Just to kind of follow up Trustee Hamud's comments, what I meant by, "We're not blaming, we're not pointing fingers, we don't need to blame Lansing, we don't need to blame, you know, National," we don't need to blame anybody. Back, Trustee Elaine, my colleague, was at the table, and we started a discussion. Every time we talked about dropout rates, every time we talked about graduation rates, there was answers that, "You don't need to be looking at this, you need to be looking at this section," something like that. Finally, we owned it. We took ownership. At the local level, you're able to do more, okay? So, you don't go from high 70s to mid to high 90s in eight years by accident. You have to own, you know, it's not a problem, you have to own the situation and move forward. And I think this is what, you know, we're going to do together moving forward, Lisa, that's what I'd like to see happen.
Yeah, so we can, first of all, we can bring a presentation on college and career readiness, because there's different, you know, aspects to that, to just have a presentation for the board. Secondly, it's something that we discuss all the time, and that would be Dan Patterson that I would have involved with that, and others from the executive team. I'll have it on my exec, or my cabinet agenda as a major issue. We've had some discussions with the college. I'm going to have it as a topic with Mr. Cavilhuna, and then we can possibly have it when we get into either study sessions or other things with the board, if we want to get in depth. But I do think it's important, like you said, to collect the data, come out with it, bring it forward. And there is some positives, as you mentioned, I know we had the college that presented here in May on what we're trying to do with remediation. So, career and college readiness, absolutely, we can work on it and get more information going.
Cavilhuna, the H is silent.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you.
Or just call him Russ.
Okay. So, school safety, I know we talked at the college board meeting last time, Trustee Elaine, about the bill that's up there to hopefully have the ability to go into close action, to talk about school safety issues and different aspects. I have Don Ball here. We'll just kind of keep it brief, but come on up to the podium just to give a highlight. Briefly, we had the major readiness drill with the city that went on last week, and we do have a brief video for that as well. It was the city, the police, it was conducted last week, Tuesday at William Ford, I think was a success, because we learned things about our preparation for emergency situations.
What we did, excuse me, we started planning this back in November with Brad Smith, who's the city emergency manager, chiefs of police, chief of the fire department. We got Oakwood Hospital, or Beaumont-Oakland involved, along with Henry Ford Hospital for mass casualty, and we started moving forward and planning it. What it culminated in was 75 people descending upon William Ford Elementary School with 26 victims, 25 victims, 26 victims, I had to make sure, and the police response to it. The report is currently in the draft phase. It's right around five pages right now, but it'll probably get longer with the attachments and everything, and I'll make that available to Dr. Maliko when it's, it was successful and not successful. We did a lot of, a lot of things the right way, but we still have a huge learning curve. We're looking at doing an elementary, or pardon me, middle school next year, along with this building for an emergency exercise. So, any questions? Yes?
Trustee Petlicoff?
So, you're going to move up the next one to a middle school. Are we at one point hoping to get into a high school?
Yes.
Situation?
Yes.
Okay, because those buildings are much more complicated to navigate than an elementary or middle school.
We're building slowly.
I assume that.
Because, and, and talking with my colleagues in the committee, we want to go to Fortson this year, but we're just not prepared for that. So, we're going to use the elementary school and the middle school for the learning curve, and then we're going to get the building staff more involved in it, and then run a full-scale exercise at a high school in two years.
Maybe a pizza party afterwards will help.
Oh, it depends.
I'm signing off on the bill.
Which reminds me, I still have all the credit card receipts if you want.
Thank you, Dr. Ball. Appreciate it. So, I do have one more thing, and trustees did receive an email, it was late, later today, from Mr. Mustafa, and he probably didn't get a chance to open it. But it was something that came to my attention last night, late, actually. Last Friday, there was a story that ran on a national website. We, as a school district, have concerns with parts of the story. We're not going to further publicize it here, but I'm not going to mention the name. However, I just want to clarify a few points. The reporter who contacted us gave the impression that the story was going to be on an educational services we provide to new immigrants and refugee families. There was no mention about doing a story on the topic that was ultimately part of the final article. Myself and another longtime respected, highly qualified staff member are quoted in the story. Certain comments from that staff member using the story do not accurately describe what was said, and were taken out of context. Reading the story with an objective eye, as if I knew nothing about Dearborn, the Dearborn Public Schools, or the vast diversity of cultures that exist in our community, the story could be interpreted to show how our generations, over the generations, new immigrants to Dearborn have used education to make social, economical, and cultural changes in their community. The problem with the story is that it unfairly paints a large section of our community with a broad brush, and does not accurately reflect the current values and structures of the community. The article also damages the reputation of a valued staff member who has dedicated their entire career to helping students and families by misquoting and taking words out of context. The staff member has been wrongly mischaracterized. We understand that there may be many other community members upset about the misleading messages in this article. We have reached out, today I made a phone call, to the reporter to share our concerns and those concerns of our residents. Again, I'm sorry to be so vague with my description, but I do not, I will not help to promote this article at this meeting that's shown on cable, TV, YouTube, and often streamed by others. I'm responding to our community, our citizens, to let them know about this situation. And the Dearborn Schools values and celebrates the rich diversity that exists in our city. We work to bring understanding of cultures, traditions, and customs to all of our students and staff members. Our goal is to provide the very best education to all of our 21,000 students, and to always do that work with a clear vision of students first, and we will continue to do that. Thank you.
Next item, please.
Next item, recognition and acknowledgements. First one is Teacher of the Year Awards, Impact Awards.
Good evening, everybody. So, yeah, every year, we have these, a couple of great things that take place in our district, great events. One of them is our Teacher of the Year Award. And that, of course, is a sponsorship, or a great partnership opportunity with our Dearborn Chamber of Commerce, and the many, many businesses that sponsor that event. The winning teacher does get $1,000, as well as a lot of other nice prizes, and, and most importantly, they get the recognition that they so rightly deserve for the work that they do in our district. We always do a press release when that comes out, and when those teachers are named, but we want to make sure that we acknowledge them here at this board meeting, so that their names are officially part of our Board Minutes. So, this year's winners for the Teacher of the Year Award at the high school level was Dr. John Byrel, who is over at the Michael Berry Career Center. At the middle school, Mr. Peter Suni from Bryant Middle School. At the elementary, representing grades preschool through second grade, was Elizabeth Gutierrez from Gear Park. Gear Park really had a, kind of a lock on this year's winners, as both elementary school winners came from Gear Park. The three through five winner was Maria Iliano, and she is from Gear Park Elementary as well. So, these were the four teachers that won those awards. And the chamber did change things up a little bit this year, so the Teacher of the Year Award now is called the Students' Choice, Students' Choice Teacher of the Year Award. And I think this is really to recognize the fact that it is the students who are nominating these teachers. And so, this is not an award based upon some, you know, in-depth rubric and analysis and breakdown or whatever. This is an award that comes from the heart. It's an award that's based on those relationships that those teachers build with their students, and those students share those very, very emotional stories about those teachers that have really, really made a difference in their lives. So, I think that's important, just to kind of acknowledge these teachers once again, make sure their names are out there. At the same time, we also started a couple of years back, the Impact Awards. And this was a way for our district to come up with an award that will recognize those staff members who are not classroom teachers. The Teacher of the Year Award, those teachers are classroom teachers, and we know that there are many, many other staff members, including other teachers. So, for example, media specialists, they're teachers. They don't always get that recognition in the Teacher of the Year Award. But we also have custodians, and principals, and paraprofessionals, and, and hundreds of other staff members who we wanted to recognize, and that's why we came up with the Impact Awards. This year, we, our four winners for the Impact Awards, which were named at the Green Tie Event, the Dearborn Education Foundation's Green Tie Event, was, our first winner was Counselor Abraham Badun from Etzel Ford High School, Principal Veronica Jakubus over at Long Elementary, Building Engineer Myron Kerlik, he is over at the Dearborn Heights Campus in the Berry Center, and Paraprofessional Dawn Rootpritch, who is also from the Berry Career Center. So, those were our Teacher of the Year Awards and our Impact Award winners. We wanted to make sure, like we said before the school year ended, I know we do a lot of publicity for them, their names are, will appear in the first bell, and we do a press release and things like that, but we do feel it's important to bring those names once again in front of the board, in front of the public, to make sure they get that recognition they so rightly deserve. So, thank you.
Congratulations to them. Next item, please.
Next item is Amicus Scholarships.
We have Mr. Buick, and I, he asked me to come up as well, because I'm part of that group, I'm part of all the.
Mr. Buick and Mr. Buick.
The Dearborn Amicus Club has been giving that scholarship away for one member of each high school for a number of years now. Due to a little miscommunication, I don't have the checks tonight, but we will get them for them. And I'm going to apologize for mispronouncing a name or two here. They were based on essays that the students submitted, and they were viewed anonymously based on the applicant's post-secondary goals and how leadership in high school has contributed or prepared them for life after high school. From Etzel Ford High School, it's Noor Alzoubid. From Fortson High School, Batul Dabaji. And from Dearborn High School, Zaher, Zahra Nasir.
Next item, please.
And thank you, thank you for investing in our students as well. Every year.
Next item is the Exchange Club of Dearborn Academic Excellence Awards.
Yes, I'm the president of the Exchange Club Dearborn Foundation, and I'd like to do, Charlie Corbin is the president of the Exchange Club. First, I'd like to thank the Board of Education and the School District Administration for permitting the Exchange Club to present its academic excellence awards at tonight's meeting. We'd also like to thank the high school principals and Executive Director Jill Chocle for their help in establishing this award program. This evening, we are presenting the Exchange Club of Dearborn Academic Excellence Award. Three 2018 valedictorians named by their high schools will each be given a one-time $1,500 cash gift to be used for education or any other purpose. Name of the academic excellence award program is to encourage and reward high school achievement and assist recipients with the cost of furthering their education. It's now our honor to present these $1,500 gifts to each of the valedictorians. Valedictorian recipient from Dearborn High is Ali Osman. Valedictorian recipient from Etzel Ford is Marwa Albutani. And then a valedictorian recipient from Fortson, Fatima Bashir Taj. And congratulations to the award recipients and their families, and thank you to the school board and the school administration for your help and support.
Thank you for.
Thank you.
Creating these scholarships for these students. Next item, please.
Next item is Metro Bureau Scholarships.
Mr. Pretty, who's going to come?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Doug Pretty, and I am the Associate Executive Director of the Metropolitan Detroit Bureau of School Studies Incorporated. Our organization serves 75 public school districts, community colleges, and universities throughout the metropolitan Detroit region. I'm here tonight to award a $1,000 scholarship. This year, we had 75 students from throughout the Metro Bureau districts, representing 32 different school districts, applied for these Metro Bureau scholarships. Applications were reviewed by a committee made up of school superintendents and curriculum directors, and they were judged on academic merit, career choice, and their vision on how they will use their education to benefit others. At this time, I would like to call Zahra Alkayak up to the podium. Zahra is one of 16 successful scholarship applicants, and will receive a check this evening for $1,000. These scholarships are given in honor of our former executive director, Dr. Thomas McLennan, who many of you knew and loved. He served as the Bureau's Executive Director for 24 years. Dr. McLennan grew up in the Down River area and attended Wayne State University, where he attained his bachelor's, master's, and doctoral degrees in education, and then went back and got his law degree. He knew education was important, and he experienced firsthand what a good education could do for a child from a working-class family. Dr. McLennan, as you know, began his career here in Dearborn as a teacher, and eventually became your superintendent. During his tenure at the Metro Bureau, he started this scholarship fund to support students pursuing their education at a local university in a field of, in the human services area. And he had encouraged educators and businesses that work with schools to donate money to the scholarship fund. Tonight, with this presentation, we have given over $300,000 in Dr. McLennan's memory through the years. So, tonight, it gives me great pleasure, Zahra, to award you a certificate from the Metro Bureau and a check for $1,000, and also an official Metro Bureau pen to take notes next year.
You want a picture?
Hold on, David, hold on. Thought you changed your mind.
No, it just thought Doug goes back a long way. Hi.
He hired me as a teacher when he was in HR.
Bidi, okay.
I see Shannon Peterson updating her grant tally for scholarships there, she's busy. Next item is acknowledgement of donations.
Good evening. A donation of two hundred and seventy-three dollars and four cents has been offered to William Ford Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for school beautification project. A donation of two hundred and three dollars and thirty-three cents has been offered to McDonald Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for playground beautification. A donation of a hundred and sixty-nine dollars and thirty-nine cents has been offered to Maples Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for education on ecosystems. A donation of two hundred and sixty-nine dollars and thirty-three cents has been offered to Fortson High School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for a beautification project. A donation of five thousand dollars has been offered to Howard Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for Chromebooks and One Cart. A donation of one hundred dollars has been offered to the Dearborn Education Foundation by the Metropolitan Detroit Bureau of School Studies in memory of State Superintendent Brian Whiston. A donation of fifty dollars has been offered to the Dearborn Education Foundation by Leonard and Virginia Resmersky in memory of the State Superintendent Brian Whiston. A donation of five hundred dollars has been offered to Stout Middle School by Grand Canyon Tours to be used for prizes for their Wheels Assembly, which has been going on for twenty years since I was a teacher at Stout. A donation of five hundred dollars has been offered to Salina Elementary Intermediate School, I'm sorry, Salina Intermediate School by Mr. Hassan Harabi to be used for scholarship, sponsorship for summer basketball camp and for Salina Intermediate students. A donation of two hundred dollars has been offered to Salina Intermediate School by Mr. Hussein Barry to be used for sponsorship for summer basketball camp for Salina Intermediate School students. Recommended action, move that the donations to the school district be accepted and letters of appreciation be sent to the donors. I don't know if I'm supposed to read that part. I saved you a few lines.
Before you leave, what's Wheels Assembly?
The Wheels Assembly is when all the students at Stout get into the auditorium, and all year long, they're earning these tickets in their classrooms. And then the, the late Imad Fadallah was the principal, I believe, that started the tradition. And then we would give away a ton of bikes and prizes and all kinds of fun things, and it just went on like sometime around this time of the year. But, you know, you earn these tickets that went in there, so Wheels is to represent the bikes that were always donated and that the kids always won. So there was always several bikes that were given away among several other prizes. So it was a fun, fun memory, and the kids always had such a blast.
How did they get the tickets?
By doing everything, from doing good on your schoolwork, to doing citizenship, to picking up garbage in the hall, to being kind to the person next to you, anything caught doing good. It was our version of positive behavior support. Reinforcement, exactly, at that time.
Good idea.
Yeah, it's a great, great memories.
Thank you.